Welcome to the meeting for the Planning Commission from the City of Mobile. It's February 22nd. I'd like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. This meeting is divided into two sessions, public hearing and deliberation. In the public hearing session, we will have an agenda item that is called. The applicant makes their presentation. Commission members ask questions, if any, and members of the public make their comments to the commission. A reminder for those in the audience that only four people can speak for an agenda item and four people against. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. During speaking, at the one-minute mark, you'll hear a warning bell or a beep, and we'll ask that you summarize your comments. After opposition speakers have finished, an applicant is allowed a two-minute rebuttal. If you do intend to speak, come to the bottom of the stairs, to the podium, speak into the microphone. Please provide your name and address for the record. Direct all your comments to the commission only and not to the applicant, the staff, or the audience. After hearing all applications, we will then go into deliberation, where we will discuss each application with input from staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. The commissioners will then vote on each application, and the results of that voting can be learned from the Planning Department. If some issues arise during deliberation that were not addressed in the public hearing, we have the discretion to allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them, or call for the application to be held for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, a commissioner may recuse themselves for discussing, voting a given application. That does not mean they are directly involved with the application or the applicant, but depending on circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal. If a regular member recuses, a supernumerary can vote in their stead. Reminder that the Planning Commission makes final decisions on subdivisions with appeals of those decisions to the Circuit Court. The Planning Commission is strictly a recommending body for rezonings, conditional use permits, and planned developments. The City Council makes the final decision on these applications, and all appeals of City Council decisions are to the Circuit Court. At this time, please turn off all cell phones, if you've got your AT&amp;T service pack, any electronic devices to silent, and commissioners and staff, please turn on your microphones when speaking. I'll call the roll, myself, Jay Stubbs, present, Mr. Kirk Matei, Ms. Jennifer Denson, Ms. Shirley Sessions, Mr. Larry Dorsey, Mr. Chad Anderson, Mr. Matt Anderson, Mr. Nick Amberger, Mr. Josh Woods, Mr. Harry Brisland, Mr. Kenny Nichols. We do have a quorum, and I'll entertain a motion to adopt the February 22nd agenda that has 11 agenda items.
Seconded.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor. The motion passes. We'll move on to our first agenda item, which is a holdover, a subdivision at 5377 Moffett Road, the Hive subdivision of 11 lots, just over three acres. It has 11 conditions, subject for the, should it be approved? Is the applicant present? The applicant is present. Are you in agreement with all 11 conditions? Seeing as this has been brought up, is there any additional information you'd like to provide regarding this application from the previous month's meeting? Please come down. If you, yeah, thank you.
Todd Shirk, 4046 Shepinalik Lane. I just wanted to clarify from last time. I think we had already, we'd already talked about that we weren't closing off, or we were just extending McIntyre, and we weren't opening up to Moffett, or adding a cul-de-sac. So there will be some, will be 11 new lots that will increase some of the traffic, but we will be extending the sidewalks as well and completing, basically, an extension of the existing subdivision. Some new information, yeah, from the owner. The, each lot will have a three-bedroom, two-bath house. He's looking at 1,508 to 1,622 square feet per house, depending on the lot size. And he's looking to sell them at about $180 a square foot. So compared to the surrounding properties, that should increase the property value of adjacent homes. I know before in the other meeting, they were, I think it might not. But based off of that information, it should be a positive to their home values. I did talk to Aldott. They were willing to discuss, and basically, they said they were willing to discuss, but could not guarantee, you know, it would be agreeable or allow the connection at Moffett, but they needed more information. But obviously, they prefer limiting connections to their main roadways. So that's the new information.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from commissioners?
Yes, sir. So, Mr. Kirk.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I appreciate you not asking for a sidewalk waiver on the UDC. That's my sticking point there on a lot of things, appreciate that. So Aldott, they didn't give you a timeframe, you didn't really go through the process. And again, this is the same thing that we talked about last month. But, you know, I thought kind of that we had that conversation. And I guess the owner being in Houston, right?
Right.
I thought we kind of had that conversation of possibly flipping that and hearing.
We did, we did. I mean, it's still on the table, but we wanted to get feedback on this one first. I mean, if this one is not going to go forward, then obviously, the other option would be something.
Because if it fails today, I mean, you know, there's some time before you can resubmit, I guess.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments from commissioners? All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone else here to speak against this agenda item? How many do we have by show of hands? Okay, I count five hands as a reminder that we will allow four in opposition, and we'll be at five minutes each. So decide amongst yourselves who would like to go first, second, third, and fourth. And reminders, please give your name and address for the record.
Lauren O'Kelly, 5480 Carriage Woods Court. Three years ago, I became the spokesperson for our community when we established the Overlook Heights Community Improvement Group, which was recognized by the Mobile City Council. Many of the homeowners in our neighborhood have been here 20 years or more. The residents of Overlook Heights adamantly oppose the opening or extension of McIntyre Drive and ask that the City of Mobile maintain the fact, excuse me, that this property has a Moffett Road address, which is a main artery with existing curb cuts and not a McIntyre Drive address. McIntyre Drive is Overlook Heights. I was unable to find precedent for embedding a new independently named subdivision in the heart of an already long-established neighborhood. We believe this to be highly unorthodox. Neither Racine Ave nor McIntyre Drive can adequately or safely support the traffic involved with the building of 11 new homes and extension of the street. The City of Mobile is aware of an already existing traffic safety issue on Racine Ave, for which they approved and budgeted for three years ago speed bumps, but have yet to actually install them. In 2021, when we opposed this plan for apartments on this property, the owner did agree to take the opening of McIntyre Drive off the table if his plan was approved. His rezoning request was denied, so the plan was moved. At that time, we stated that we would not oppose single-family homes on the property in the future, as long as they did not again plan to open McIntyre Drive. We hold true to our word and will end our opposition if the property plans are reversed to have the only entry and exit remain on Moffett Road and proper screening and separation from McIntyre Drive is maintained. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition? Okay, name and address for your record, please, ma'am. And if you don't mind, pull the microphone down a little bit.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brenda Alexander-Gate, and I reside at 1581 McIntyre Drive. And I'm basically here to speak for the entire community. We have already decided that this is not a good fit for us, a new subdivision at the end of our street, based on the fact of the, fact that we are a close, quiet, nestled community where we don't have any problems. And we feel like including an additional 11 lots with potentially 22 or 24 possible vehicles coming up and down our quiet street would actually adversely affect our way of life. And I'm standing here with the petition from everybody that's on our street in both of our communities that's standing against this proposal. I feel like because we are united as a community, and we feel like this is not a good fit for us, I have also taken the liberty to obtain these names for the petition. And I'm speaking on behalf of the participants who have already signed this petition, that we are clearly against the opening of this street. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander-Gate. A reminder for your name and address for the record, sir.
Good afternoon. My name's Kenneth Loker, and I reside at 1596 McIntyre Drive. As stated, and we've been here before, and we would hope that we would remove our opposition from this project. But I heard that the developer is saying that it would be three bedrooms. I know that's not so because of small lots. We stand in opposition because of the decrease in our property value, loss of neighborhood character, increased crime. And you know that crime is very rampant right now in Mobile. Increased vehicle traffic that will take place if McIntyre is open. And so we stand in opposition because we don't want this street to be open. I have lived here 25 years, and some of the longer residents have been here over 30-some years. And the homes was built in probably 1980. And so we don't want to leave our opposition unopposed. And so that's where we stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loker. Fourth and final speaker in opposition, and then a reminder to the applicant, we'll have a two-minute rebuttal period if desired.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. Planning Commission members and staff. I generally don't find myself on this side of the podium. Usually, I'm on that side. But today, I am here because I am representing some residents in District 7 who I represent. And you've already heard from some. These are all of the residents who have managed to drive downtown today and pay for parking to come back a second time. Probably the only person in here who knows exactly how I feel today and what my job is is my colleague, Councilman Woods, who was our representative on the council. I think Nick Amberger gets a feel for it occasionally in the job that he is in. But my job is to represent my constituents, to help them resolve and find resolutions to their problems and to advocate on their behalf. And that's exactly what I'm here to do today. The residents who are here and others who couldn't make the trip are vehemently opposed to what is currently on your agenda. You should have all received a letter from me by email, hopefully, that also includes some emails between me and Mr. Todd Shirk, who is the engineer for Gulf State's Engineering and is the representative for the property owner, that states that the property owner was in agreement to do basically what we're referring to as a swap of the design. So prior to the Planning Commission last week, based on that agreement, as you can see in those emails, hopefully you've seen them, I was certainly under the impression that everything was going to be worked out, as these residents were, and that the subdivision would be changed to reflect basically that swap, moving the entrances onto Moffett Road and then backing up the subdivision with a cul-de-sac backing up to McIntyre. But, of course, that didn't happen. I know there were some other issues that came up about notifications, so it is back on our agenda today. But the basic points to remember and consider in light of some of the discussions that have come up about benefits is that the neighbors remain opposed to the way this is designed, opening up McIntyre to put in a brand-new subdivision and putting 11 brand-new spanking, brand spanking new homes next to older, more traditional homes. They are certainly not opposed to single-family homes being developed. We need single-family homes in this city, as we all know. They are not opposed to a subdivision being built. What they are opposed to, as you have heard, is opening McIntyre and putting in the subdivision that way. When it comes to the idea that opening up McIntyre and putting in this subdivision would benefit the residents who live there now, well, my question is, who asked them? Nobody. Who asked me for an opinion, since I represent the residents? The first person who did was Mr. Shirk. He reached out to me to find out if there indeed was any opposition or contentiousness, possible contentiousness, maybe we could work something out. And we did. He talked to the property owner, told me that the property owner agreed that he would put the entrances and exits off Moffett Road. I thought we were done. If there had been a meeting that included me and these neighbors, we could have saved ourselves a lot of time, money, and energy, and this would have been done. McIntyre, as you've already heard, is a subdivision that is off Overlook Road. It was built in 1980, 44 years ago, before some of you guys up here were even born. Mr. Loker has lived in his house for 35 years, I mean, for 25 years. The other gentleman, 35, and I would suggest that probably some of the neighbors have been there even longer than that. Maybe they were the original owners back in 1980. In the 44 years since its development, garbage trucks, trash trucks, fire engines, ambulances, you name it, have had no problem getting in and out. Their garbage was collected yesterday? No problems? All right. So to enable the property owner to develop his property, like he wants to do, like he's been trying to do for years, to build the homes, we are simply asking that the design be changed to flip it to the other side. Entrances off Moffett, cul-de-sac backs up to McIntyre Drive, put in some natural vegetation, we're done. We would agree to that. No more opposition. I've spoken to Matthew Erickson at Aldott. You all know who Matt Erickson is, right? He told me that there has been a conversation between the representative of the property owner and his permit people, but no permits have been let. It was only a verbal conversation. Matt told me yesterday, Aldott has no problem with Moffett Road being the entrance and exit. So I know my time is up, I'm a little talky here, but I'm the elected person who represents the area. I am asking you, along with these residents, make the swap. The flip's still on the table, he said so. Let's do that, we're good, we go home. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. Entertain two-minute rebuttal, if you'd like to have any time.
Yeah, the conversations that I had with Ms. Gregory were before the previous Planning Commission meeting. And based off feedback from that and from talking with Aldott, you know, we decided, you know, we just want to get a response on this version. And, you know, if you guys don't want it, then I guess we'll go with the other version. And she's right, and all I said was that we contacted Aldott and got preliminary feedback. There was no permit, you know, we didn't, we don't even have that design done. So, you know, it was just an email. So I guess that's it.
Ms. President.
Go ahead. So, given kind of the questions that the community has and the representative for that community, again, I do want to remind that if this does fail today, I mean, it's putting you back some time. We also, too, I mean, you know, I just had a conversation the past day or two about the fact that we do desperately need housing in Mobile. I think we have industry going up. I just want to, you know, just want to remind you that if it does fail today, it sets you back some time, and I don't want to hold up progress.
Right.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I have a question for staff or maybe for legal counsel. Would it be possible to pass this today with a contingent configuration alteration?
Hmm.
Let Margaret answer. Okay.
You have before you this plat. To simply flip it is not in play because McIntyre Drive will have to have a turnaround provided. So in the absence of a plan that illustrates that to review for compliance, the commission cannot act on something they don't have. What you have today before you is this. I can tell I haven't answered your question.
You have not. But, so if McIntyre is not being extended, where would you even put a turnaround?
A turnaround will have to be provided because it's a dead-end street. Subdivision regulations require the continuation of a dead-end street. In this case, it could be as simple as a hammerhead so that the trash trucks and fire trucks and all the other services that we've been talking about that have been backing down McIntyre Drive for 40 years will now have an appropriate turnaround.
The only way to get sufficient land for a hammerhead on McIntyre would be to either ask for or make as a condition of subdivision a right-of-way dedication on the plat, correct? Basically.
I am very, I am very reluctant to try and give some information on hypotheticals. In the absence of a plat showing the geometry, the dimensions, the square footage compliance, et cetera, it's very difficult to answer.
Right.
One other thing I did want to bring up. This is purely a subdivision, as has been discussed. As such, there is no time limitation on a resubmission.
Question for staff. So the simplest, easiest way, without making assumptions, would be to resubmit potentially with the flip because I think last go-around, we said that approving the flip, we couldn't do that. So resubmit with the flip, also seeking a waiver of the street. I guess the street ordinance, the street ordinance, correct? With that, I mean, they would need a waiver in order not to forfeit any land as far as a right-of-way is concerned.
And allow time for a resubmission, if that's what the applicant wants.
Okay, with the waiver. I guess the question of the day is, at the moment, without forfeiting land to a right-of-way, to ensure that the parcel is the parcel and the subdivision is the subdivision, without forfeiting it to the city for a right-of-way for that hammerhead, they would need to seek a waiver to not do the hammerhead, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Thank you. I hate to put staff in the position of having to make a determination without looking at the geometry and everything involved.
Who can waive the hammerhead?
Who can waive the hammerhead?
I think that's going to be a fire, fire decision.
I think it's going to be both.
Yeah.
This body in addition.
There clearly is issues there on McIntyre, even though it may operate, garbage trucks are having a term on private property or have a background on the street, which is not an ideal situation for a citizen. If it's working, it's working, but that's not the less than ideal. Question I have to ask, is any of the...
Nick, will you turn on your microphone, please, since you're getting into a question? Thank you, sir.
Turned on the wrong one. Thought I turned it on. In any of the research for this, it's kind of odd that McIntyre is a stub like it is now. Were there any, like, future phases for McIntyre that was planned? Or is that just an odd remnant where something was just stubbed out? I'm just curious if there was, you know, any old plats or any old, you know, future phase-type drawings that might have indicated it being extended?
We no longer have those records because they're 40 years old and they were not acted upon. We were able to find where, basically... Okay. We're going to have to just go kind of manual. You see Racine Avenue? All the lots fronting Racine were in place, and the street stub was provided to McIntyre. Then McIntyre Drive, beginning at the lots fronting on Racine, McIntyre Drive as it exists now in Carriage Woods Court, came in and was developed at one time. Like I said, we do not have any records regarding the extension of McIntyre Drive because it was never built. Those records have been since purged.
Yeah, so today, as McIntyre is built out today, it would not be allowed today because it wouldn't meet the fire, it wouldn't meet the fire code.
That's correct. It would have to be a turnaround, a cul-de-sac, if that were submitted today.
So not completely answering this question, but I know a couple of other commissioners were saying, what would that look like? It would probably have to encroach in either one of the lots or into that common area, and then they have to just work out the geometry of how that might look and how that might reshape a retention pond or something like that. So doable, but the engineer has to work on some geometry. Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, it could go one side or the other, affect the shape of all the dimensions of all the lots that are proposed. So we can't really speculate what that is.
Well, most likely, we would lose two lots to put in the turnaround and our cul-de-sac going the other way.
Yeah, I'd just be as creative as you can get with geometry at the end of the day.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So kind of looking at that, the previous one, the flume, is what I'm looking at, not for the usage or anything, but just for the design. So based on what we're saying here, you know, this issue kind of arose. I definitely understand fire code. But I, you know, I know just where I'm at. I know there's a lot of those dead-end type of streets. So based on what we're saying, this not necessarily is a UDC issue, per se, or a subdivision regulation, but we're diving into fire code at that point. So therefore, you know, that Sawada Drive, I believe, you know, kind of the same issue, I guess, is what we're looking at. I guess I'm just trying to put some context into how this issue arose. We're looking at more of a fire code issue versus just a municipal code ordinance issue.
Referring to the turnaround?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
You're looking at both. The subdivision regulations specifically call out for the continuation of existing streets that is in the subdivision regulations. If McIntyre Drive is not going to be continued, this body will have to waive that requirement. The other issue is the fire code, which stands alone.
One question I was hearing, I think I heard Councilman Gregory correct. Did the actual developer, not the engineer representing the developer, did the actual developer speak with and meet with the property owners to alleviate some concerns? I heard one gentleman say something to the effect about the square footage of the houses, only two bedrooms and stuff like that.
That was information I got from him, but he has not met with them on this version. I mean, I think they had on this, you know, version of the development before they had a community meeting on the previous, you know, when it was...
But he's not, he's not actually spoken to the neighbors.
Not recently, no, not that I know of.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from commissioners, either for staff or the applicant or Fire Department? Who's present? Not present? No, I thought somebody over there was from Fire Department, not mistaken. All right.
Can I ask one question on the hammerhead?
Go ahead.
Is it going to, I mean, is that a guarantee that we have to do it or that it's going to be waived? Or I just don't know if it's going to be viable losing two lots for the owner. I'd have to ask him.
You're going to have to speak with the Fire Department.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir. So we'll move on from that agenda item in public hearing to the new agenda items. to the new agenda items on the application or on the agenda. We have number two subdivision at 560 Shady Oak Drive, the Oak Place subdivision of one lot, um, .16 acres. And is the applicant present?
Yeah.
Are you in agreement with the nine conditions listed and are aware of those? Should this be approved? The applicant is present and aware of the conditions. Is there anyone else here to speak for this subdivision at 560 Shady Oak Drive? Please, sir, if you'd like to come on down to the microphone.
Good afternoon, planning commission members and staff. Um, I have one question about the, oh, Brian Mazel, 5570 Nevious Road, Mobile. I have one question about the recommendations. Um, I don't have, I don't have a problem with what has been requested. Uh, my only concern is that on, um, one of the recommendations, it says that they would like to place a note on the plat to permanently restrict access in the back of the property, in essence, the backyard, to permanently restrict access to the service road there at I-65. This is residential lot, single-family, R1 residential lot. My intentions are to develop it facing Shady Oak Drive. All these houses on that street, very old, been there a long time. The reason I'm here is it was a meets and bounds description. So, I'm following the guidelines of creating a one-lot subdivision. The issue I have and what I need your consideration on is that the city of Mobile considers this a two-street frontage property. And therein, they're imposing not just a twenty-five-foot setback for any fencing on the main street of Shady Oak, which I have no problem with. Eventually, my plan for building the house would be to set the house back to that building setback and bring the privacy fence in at that point. The issue is that they're requesting or saying that it needs to be a twenty-five-foot setback, fence setback on the back of the lot. Uh, yes, I see some heads shaking, no. But I recently inquired about a fence permit and they made it very clear that I would not be able to place a fence any closer to the back property line than twenty-five feet. If that's the case, that, um, that deletes the backyard of this small lot. So, literally, the house would be right at, I mean, the fence would be right at the building setback, which would be at the fence, and the backyard would go away. Um, which would really impede the value of the lot, the marketability of the lot. So, what I'm asking for today, if I'm understanding that correctly, and I believe I am, is to get a waiver of that twenty-five-foot setback for a rear property fence and to have it, uh, within the normal setback guidelines of a rear property fence line. I'm third. Yes.
Okay. The twenty-five-foot setback line is required via the subdivision regulations. That is applicable to buildings. And that is part of the subdivision regulations as well as mirrored in the UDC. However, I believe what, um, Mr. Mazel is referring to is also in the UDC, but not in the subdivision regulations, are the setback requirements and height restrictions for privacy fences. In that regard, because this is a double-fronting lot, he would have to go to the Board of Zoning Adjustment to obtain a fence variance for the fence in the backyard that fronts the service road. That's not under the purview of this, of the commission. That's strictly under the purview of the Board of Adjustment.
Just for clarity, the setback is really for the structure. That's what the building structure...
The setback on the subdivision plat, yes, is strictly for buildings. It does not address fences.
Yes, Margaret. Uh, that's what I was presuming until I inquired about a fence and then they told me the fence couldn't be built any closer than the building setback to the back property line. All right.
And I think while we...
So, I need to take this to the Board of Adjustment? Okay. I was here a couple of months ago on lot, two lots away, same thing. Didn't have an issue with any of the items until this came up. So, I can present both lots at that, Margaret? Okay.
But this item, this agenda item still needs subdivision approval, correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct. For him to obtain the fences where he wants them would require variance.
Got it.
Yes, I don't have a problem with any of the conditions. I just needed clarification on that to make sure it didn't really, uh...
Yes, sir.
...into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mazel.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak against it? Seeing none, we'll move on to number three. A subdivision at 1408 Cody Road North, Cody Road subdivision of one lot, just under sixteen and a half acres. Is the applicant present? You're aware of the twelve conditions listed? Should this be approved? Applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak against it? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number four. Subdivision of the north side of Industrial Parkway, extension five hundred and seventy feet east of US Highway 43 South. This is the 3B South subdivision. Two lots, uh, at eight hundred and eighty-two acres. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with the eleven listed conditions? Should this be approved? The applicant is present and in agreement with the eleven listed conditions. This would require a waiver of Section 6C3 for commissioners? Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone to speak against it? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number five. This is 1852 and 1856 Butler Street, the Butler East Side subdivision. Two lots, uh, right at a quarter of an acre. It's been noted here that the planning commission cannot consider this for subdivision for approval for a couple of different reasons. On our notes, I'll let commissioners read those. Uh, it's been suggested for holdover. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with a suggestion of holdover for resubmit of application so it's in good order? Applicant is present and in agreement with that option. But since it's on the agenda, is anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak against it?
How long are we holding this over? How long are we holding this over?
Yeah, the potential, the, well, it's already, they just gave a, we got a nod of approval from this PAPAS that said it would be next meeting, which the next meeting date is slated for March, yeah? March twenty-one. All right, I'll re-ask. Anyone for this agenda item? Anyone against? Any questions, comments from commissioners? All right. Moving on, agenda item number six. Subdivision application for a sidewalk waiver at 7700 Summit Court. Request to waive the construction of sidewalk along Summit Court and Schillinger Road South. Is the applicant present to speak towards this waiver application and reasoning? Would you like to come down and say anything?
Good afternoon. Paul Marcinco, Jade Consulting, 208 North Greeno Road, Fairhope. I'm here on behalf of the client. Um, as the applicant, we are the civil engineer for this project. We've completed the design of the site, gone through a majority of the LDP process. Um, most departments, I believe, are ready to approve. The last comment really remaining and why I'm before you today is to talk about the sidewalk in this area and the sidewalk waiver that we are requesting. If you've looked at the site, um, it is on Summit Court. We had a neighborhood meeting as little background with some of the neighboring property owners when we thought we would have to rezone this after the annexation in July. Turns out that rezoning process happened before, so we withdrew our rezoning application. It's now Zone B2. Um, I'm before you today to talk about both streets, really, Schillinger as well as Summit Court. Excuse me. Um, the topography in this area is a challenge. The ALDOT work that was done has created a ditch that's very deep along Schillinger Road. There are inlets that are along the sidewalk there. I know some of the comments from staff and engineering comments mentioned that there's sufficient room within the right-of-way. I would say I agree in the sense of width, but the topography to be able to do this would be a huge impact to the ditch. If we put it on the street side, it's going to impact the ditch. The street itself is steeper than ADA requirements. Sidewalk itself would not be ADA compliant. To bring it on the other side of the ditch and even propose switchbacks would be a massive undertaking, potentially piping the ditch. We don't even know the full extent of this. Once you come down Summit, uh, we would also have to push it on to the back of the curb to be able to get that ADA compliant on Summit itself. All this being said, if the sidewalk was built, would switchbacks and massive undertaking of what it would take. There's no sidewalk in this area. It would connect to nothing. I understand, um, the comments here are related to, you know, excuse me, the complete streets, um, allowing for people of all ages to access, but there is no access on this. Summit Court itself, like I said, we had the neighborhood meeting. I know that was related to rezoning. They're excited about this. It's a Witz custard. Uh, we did the project at Daphne as well. Fortunately, that site was very flat. This one is not. Um, looking into that, I know that your considerations are based on the design and construction of streets for all users, including pedestrians. We are not building any streets in this sense. It's all private driveways to existing roads. The subdivision was designed and permitted in nineteen ninety-eight with no, none of these requirements in place. The ALDOT work itself did not put sidewalks in place. And, uh, the existing infrastructure, in this sense, I would think the consideration would be based on the fact that there is no existing infrastructure in this area. Uh, topography is also the thing that I already talked about. So, those are my thoughts on it. I'm here to answer any questions that you have and I appreciate everybody's time today.
Thanks, sir. Any questions, comments from commissioners?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Um, uh, looking forward to this development. It's actually in my district and, um, uh, very excited about it. Uh, and I definitely understand what you're saying here. Um, but when this project was annexed in, um, I did work with the owners to make sure that we took all considerations in. Um, so, uh, obviously, when Schillinger Road was repaved by ALDOT, you know, that's the county at that point. Um, it's the Wild West, as I refer to it a lot of times. Uh, you know, no zoning, nothing. I mean, you got restaurants, buildings next to houses and all that fun stuff. But I'm coming into the city, especially with the UDC code. Part of, part of coming into the city is we have a UDC code. Um, and while this might be the only sidewalk, somebody's got to start it. So, I'm in opposition to this. Um, while I support the development, but, um, at this point, um, you know, we're in the city. The UDC code applies and we got to start somewhere, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other further comments? All right, I'll ask if there's anyone else here in the audience to speak for the agenda item, which is to waive the sidewalk at Summit Court. Is there anyone else in the audience that will speak against this agenda item? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to number seven. It's a conditional use permit at 5032 Government Boulevard. Applicant is Ms. Deborah May to allow home-based child daycare for ten children in an R1 single-family residential suburban district. I will, uh, let commissioners know that you have comments in your iPad notes. Is the applicant present? And just as you are making your way to the podium, remember to say your name and address for the record. Um, also, we would have findings of fact, commissioners, and then, um, understanding of the four conditional use permit conditions for the applicant. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Deborah May and I reside at 5032 Government Boulevard here in Mobile, Alabama. I have a degree in early childhood education with a license nationally accredited, star-five rated childcare home. This means it's the highest rated childcare home or family childcare in our city. Um, it means I provide a high-quality, safe, educational environment for the children to learn through play. My childcare home has been licensed in our Lansdowne subdivision for over twenty-seven years. I've operated other family childcare homes here in Mobile because before we moved to Lansdowne, we rented homes and I had them prior to that. Um, and prior to that, I worked in Atlanta, Georgia, West Point, New York, and Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, in military childcare centers as a lead teacher and an assistant director. I've read the staff report that was submitted. Uh, one of the things that was addressed was the section on employees. Um, it was in the application, the supplemental part of it, that said that my daughter would be my full-time employee and my husband would be my other employee. Um, so, those would be the people that would be working with me because you have to have two adults, which would be myself and my daughter, working the daycare, you know, normally. And then my husband would be a backup. After speaking with the planning department, I was taught about the parking requirements, um, that we have to have one space for three children, one space per employee and two spaces per household. And I have a question about, because we're having childcare center regulations that y'all have imposed on a residential home, a lot of this is hard to meet. Um, and so, I'm asking whether stacked parking, as far as like, I have a driveway and we have a, it's rocked to the side where we've always parked, you know, to be able to enter and exit out of it. Um, you know, is that allowed? Or is a circle drive with stacked, you know, how you drive in and, you know, one right behind the other, would that be allowed? Um, because I'm looking at several ways that I can meet that requirement. Um, let's see. It was also stated in the report about the playground fencing and parking. I did not realize that my architect did not label everything as detailed as it needed to be and I spoke with him. He will, you know, label it correctly. I do have a four-foot chain-link fence within a six-foot privacy fence. Um, the privacy fence goes from the front of my house all the way around the back. The playground, because my backyard is so large and these are small children, these are children under five, um, you know, it was too much space for that little bit of children. And so, we had taken, I don't know, fifteen years ago or so, you know, put a chain-link fence down the center of the yard so that the playground is separate. And so, one of the other options for the parking would be that the parents, and we park there now, you know, at times, would be, you know, in front of where the fence line is, where the playground is, in the back. But the problem with that is after I sent that in with my application, I was told by planning that you have to have a two-way drive in and out. Um, parents, when they come to my home, they're not all there at the same time. You know, they would be going out face-forward if they park in my rear. Um, you know, I just don't see that a two-way is necessary. But even with that being stated, that I have an electrical box and the cable box is out where it would, you know, where I'd have to put that second drive. So, you know, that would be extremely hard to meet, you know, with a double drive. So, like I said, I've kind of in my head thought about, you know, maybe a circle drive, would that work, you know, for the city? Um, there's also a question about the kitchen hood that... There's also a question about the kitchen hood that we've been told that is required. I'm not real sure as far as where the information is coming from. I've looked for the fire inspection. I know that because this is a new process for home daycares versus childcare centers, we've been lumped instead of, like, the state puts us in one category where family childcare homes and family daycare group homes are in the same, you know, standard box. The others are, and centers are a separate thing. And it's a gray area to be able to meet childcare center regulations when you're living in a residential home. So, you know, I'm trying to meet all of those requirements. You know, I hope that you approve the conditional use permit. I'm doing something good for our community. I have for many years. You know, the children is definitely need in childcare with COVID, with the higher standards that they had years ago. The decrease in childcare centers and family childcare has gone down, way, way down. And like I said, this is an easy fix, but because there's a conflict between city and state, that it's not being easy for family child cares to meet, you know, all the conditions.
Thank you, Ms. May. Question for staff. On number one, revision of the site plan to illustrate compliant parking and include a table doesn't reference the double drive-in. Is that in a separate note somewhere?
No. Basically, I'm going to kind of give order. She has to have the conditional use permit approval before she could even proceed with potentially getting variances for site compliance. Now, if the commission and ultimately the city council grant approval to this application, it would be subject to either the site being compliant or obtaining the required site variances from the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Again, not trying to specifically address hypotheticals, but I can say stacked parking's not allowed, parking in the driveway's not allowed. The parking that is required via the UDC is essentially the same parking that's required for a commercial development in terms of its geometry.
Right, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
And the trigger to that is the fact that we're going from a five to a 10.
Correct. That is correct. Home-based daycares with less than five children, you're a home occupation, and you don't have to comply with these standards. Once you go over five, you're kicking in to these standards specifically called out in the UDC as well as fire code compliance.
You're basically operating as a business in the neighborhood, pretty soon.
So her path forward, assuming the use permit was approved, would probably be to pursue those variances or either find a way to comply with them?
Yes. Again, probably some site alterations to maximize the ability to comply, and then what doesn't would have to go to the board.
Any further questions, comments from commissioners? I think, Ms. May, you addressed number two, our satellite view on our report. It looks as though you have that there, staff, all of that stuff. And then as far as the hood vent, was that, that's a state?
Fire code.
Fire code, all right. Any further questions, comments from commissioners? Anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? I have three people in the audience, all in support. If you would like to speak, if you're all going to say the same thing, I'd choose that one of you come down and speak to that, or if you have separate items that you'd like to, I'm sure the applicant's in appreciation of your support. Whoever is coming down, a reminder, please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Richberg. I live at 3004 Blue Ridge Drive East. And my son has been with Debbie for about a year and a half now. My husband and I lived in Indianapolis when he was born, and we moved back to Mobile when he was about eight months old. And it took us from that May to September to actually find childcare for him. We contacted pretty much when we, you know, learned we were going to move back, we contacted everyone we could, pretty much across the county at that point, because we had no idea where we were going to end up living. And we all told that there, you know, we were told there's a waitlist for all of them for months and months. And so once we found out about Ms. Debbie, we really wanted to really get in there. So as soon as she called us and told us that she did have an available spot, we enrolled that day. So anything, I know that there are some issues and variances and everything, but anything that this commissioner, this board could do to help her go from five to 10 children, it would, it would be a huge impact for the families that she does serve. Two years later, we moved back to, you know, last May, and now two years later, I'm due with my second child in April, and we don't have anywhere for her to go either because there's still waitlisted every church daycare, every childcare development center, everywhere is still waitlisted. So childcare is a huge issue, not just in Mobile, nationwide. But I do have the pleasure of being employed at the Mobile Chamber on the Economic Development Team, and we focus a lot on workforce participation. And so that is a barrier that we have here in Mobile. And so I don't think that Ms. Debbie taking on five kids will obviously solve all of our issues, but I think it's a good start. So anything that you guys could do to help today would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two other hands raised. Would you like to speak at the podium? Ma'am, are you able to come to the podium and speak? Okay, great. Take your time and be careful, please.
I live three doors down.
Your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Julie Harrison. I live at 5060 Government, which is three doors down from her. I've lived there over 30 years. And I've walked that neighborhood about every day until my husband died as exercise. And so I know how the traffic flows around what she has going on. Now, I'm in agreement with the girl. I have, I have 11 great-grandchildren, two of them that are waiting to get in there. But the way she, the hours she keeps and the way she does it, you would not even know that there is a daycare there. The parents come in, they go in and they go out, and you don't even notice any kind of traffic whatsoever. So I, I mean, I understand the circle drive and all that, and there are circle drives in Lansdowne already. But like I'm saying, like I say, there's, it's not a traffic issue with the way that she has the times that the children come and the children leave. But in the mornings, where I personally saw them every day, the way they come, you wouldn't even know that it wasn't a private home with people coming in. They don't go out and interfere with people trying to go to work. Because the government Boulevard is a, it doesn't, it runs parallel to Highway 90 there. It's like a service road. So that's why I'm saying a lot of this stuff you're talking about are having a place to park for this and place to park for that, and a U-turn and all that. If that's because you're afraid that it's going to be a problem to the neighborhood, it really isn't. That's all I say.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. There was one more speaker. Yes, ma'am?
My name's Michelle Raven. My address is 2595 Bell Road in Montgomery. I'm the executive director of the Alabama Partnership for Children. And prior to becoming the executive director, I worked at the agency for 18 years as the teach director, which is how I became to know Deborah May and her daughter Elizabeth Butler, who is her staff. And I just want to speak today. I'm, thank you for the opportunity to come here and speak on behalf of Deborah and in support of her expansion of her childcare program. There is a childcare crisis in the state of Alabama and across the nation, and working parents are struggling to find high-quality, safe care for their children. So I believe that if you will allow Deborah to expand her business, that this will be a positive for the community, her neighborhood, and the city of Mobile. Families need quality, safe, and dependable childcare options. If these aren't available, then the communities suffer because employees are not able to go to work. So there's absenteeism. Parents are worried about their children while they're at work, and they're unable to perform their job duties. Debbie's Home Daycare is ranked a five-star center through the Alabama Department of Human Resources Quality Rating and Improvement System. The expansion from six to 10 children ensures that more children and families are able to have access to the highest quality of care, and it benefits the community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone here to speak against this agenda item? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Number eight, this dual application of a subdivision and a modification at 3201 Airport Boulevard, 410 and 450 Bel Air Boulevard. We have a recusal from Kenny Nichols. However, just keep standing, it's been recommended for potential holdover. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with potential holdover to March 20, is that 21? Is that going to fit on the date? March 21? Okay. Kenny, you can take your seat. Since it's on the agenda, is anyone else to speak for this agenda item? Anyone to speak against it? Moving on, number nine, dual application of a subdivision and modification at 4464 and 4474 Halls Mill Road. Addition and re-subdivision of Paul Persons, Persons Development and Construction. One lot, four and a third acres. Modification of a previously approved PUD. Is the applicant present? Y'all in agreement with the 11 listed conditions for the subdivision? And then the modification notes that will have findings of fact, and then 21 listed conditions on the modification? Applicants are in agreement? Anyone else in the audience to speak for this agenda item? Number nine? Anyone to speak against it? Number 10 on the agenda item, dual application of a subdivision and modification at 1109, 1111, and 1113 West I-65 Service Road North, Harris subdivision. Is the applicant present? Got a couple of hands raised. The applicant is present. Are you aware of the seven listed conditions for the subdivision? And then the finding of facts, notes, and nine listed conditions for the potential modification? The applicant is present and in agreement on both applications. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak against it? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to number 11. Another dual application of a subdivision and a rezone. 4600 Cypress Business Park Drive, 4600 Business Park subdivision. Subdivision of two lots, just under four and a half acres, and a rezone from B3 and B5 to Communities Business Suburban District B3. Applicant present? In agreement with the 10 listed conditions for the subdivision? And are you aware of the notes and findings of fact that would be in support of the rezone request? The applicant is present and in agreement with the conditions and of the potential findings of fact and conditions? Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak against it? All right, seeing none, we will move, closed public hearing, move on back to number one on the agenda for deliberation. Of note, there are two other business items on the agenda for those in the audience. Number one, holdover from subdivision of 5377 Moffett Road. The Hive subdivision extends extensive conversation on this. Applicant is present. We did have opposition speakers, and we had notes for commissioners in your iPads. Any discussion amongst commissioners, or we will entertain a motion?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. I guess I'll go on record here, especially touching on Ms. Papas' comment that the UDC requires extension, you know, of public right-of-way for projects like this. And, you know, I think there are numerous instances throughout the city where adjacent land tracts have been developed and public right-of-ways have been extended. And while I'm, you know, certainly understanding of the concerns of the residents that spoke, and also Ms., or Councilwoman Gregory's comments, I guess my, you know, question is, is there really a legal basis for us to deny this application based on what's been presented? It's not a rezone. It's R1, simply subdivision. And my interpretation is that the, you know, all the, they've essentially, you know, met all city standards and could be approved. Correct?
I agree. It's the neighborhood opposition that makes it tougher. But every case that I've looked at in preparation for this...
Can he turn his mic on?
Every case that I've looked at in preparation for this hearing today, it brings me back to this quote from an Alabama Supreme Court decision in a case involving this very planning commission. A planning commission has no discretion or choice but to approve a subdivision which conforms to the regulations. And I believe staff has already concluded that this proposed subdivision does comply with all of the sub-rates. I have no further comment.
Entertain a motion?
Well, hold on, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
The developer indicated he would be amicable to looking at redesigning. So can we not hold the thing over and see if they'll submit a different design?
Well, we held it over once, and we had that same discussion last time, and we didn't really get anywhere with that particular component. So in my opinion, this is either move to approve or move to deny, and then there is, staff has already commented that they could resubmit. Unless we get agreement from the developer, from the applicant who is present, that yes, well, the holdover, they're going to go and redesign with the expectation that we would potentially vote to approve.
I guess unless I'm misunderstanding, the owner's agent has stated he would like a vote on what is before us today. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
With that in mind, I think this application is not consistent with an orderly development or with the general welfare of the neighborhood, and I would move that we deny the application.
There's a motion to deny the application? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a properly moved second. We will go, we have nine attending. We have two in supernumerary. Takes us to seven. Supernumerary is Mr. Harry Brisland and Mr. Kenny Nichols. Go ahead.
Supernumerary's vote in the absence of a regular member. You have two.
Two, two misses, so we'll have nine. So we'll have nine counting votes.
That is correct.
All right. We'll just go down the line. We've got motions. Front row down here. The motion, yeah.
Aye.
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 Aye. The motion to deny is approved.
Okay. Mr. Anderson, I need for you to repeat the basis for the denial for the record and the letter.
It's my opinion that this development is not an orderly development suitable for the general welfare of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
So given that, have the applicant visit with staff for resubmission notes later?
At this point, it's denied. That's his choice to resubmit, appeal. We'll send out the letters.
Understood. Moving on, agenda item number two. 560 Shady Oak Drive, Oak Place subdivision. The applicant is present and in agreement with the nine listed conditions. There was discussion on the setback for the fence. Entertain a motion?
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Agenda item number three, subdivision at 1408 Cody Road North, Cody Road subdivision. The applicant is present and was in agreement with the 12 listed conditions. Entertain a motion?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number four on the subdivision, north side of Industrial Parkway, extension, US Highway 43 South, the 3B South subdivision. Applicants are present and in agreement with the 11 listed conditions. Entertain a motion?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded with the waiver of section 6C3. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number five on the agenda, subdivision at 1852 and 1856 Butler Street, recommended for holdover to March 21st. Applicant is, was present and in agreement to that holdover. Entertain a motion?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes for holdover for the agenda item number five. Number six, subdivision sidewalk waiver at 7700 Summit Court. Request to waive the construction of sidewalks along Summit Court and Schillinger Road. The applicant was, is present and made extensive comments towards the reasoning on the sidewalk waiver.
A motion to deny.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in, go ahead.
Just want to say, you know, I disagree, or I, I agree with the waiver request and I think if you look at the circumstances, you know, surrounding this particular piece of property and topography and, you know, the nature of the surrounding area and, you know, I understand Mr. Councilman Woods, excuse me, comment about somebody's got to start. You know, I don't disagree that somebody's got to start, but I'm just not sure that this is the right place to start, given the context of this particular piece of property.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor for denial of the sidewalk waiver?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, we have forum and majority for the sidewalk waiver to be denied, based on my count. Number seven on the agenda item. 5032 Government Boulevard, a rezone. Applicant, Ms. Deborah May, conditional use permit to go to 10 children in an R1 single-family residential. The applicant spoke extensively on her understanding of the permits, conditional use permit request if approved and her conditions. Entertain a motion? We do have findings of fact, yes. Thank you.
They are found in your staff report on page 6 of 12 for this report.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Wait, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I did have one, one additional question for staff. Is, is it kept at 10? If, if she decided she wanted to go to 11 or 12 in the future, I mean, it's, I mean, it's, I'm just curious, what, what happens if there's a future expansion because she is kind of at the point of needing to go find commercial space in which to, to take this activity. I'm just curious where that, where that lies.
What'll happen is, the UDC, and I don't have it committed to memory, five and under home-based daycare, five to, I believe it's 10, 12, or 10. 10 to 12, you're in this category where you require a conditional use permit in a residential deer, area. Above that, it's prohibited.
Okay. And then if she, if she's not successful, if she's not successful in getting the variances for the improvements to the property, effectively the conditional use of permit is not, not, not usable. So, she's going to have to do that work to get to the point.
She has to comply with the UDC, including the site development standards or obtaining the corresponding variances.
Okay. Thank you.
And the conditional use permit does not carry with the land, it's only with the applicant?
No, sir, it is with the land.
So, we'll stay with the land.
So, if she sells and somebody else comes in with, you know, the same type, the same use.
Right.
It, it's attached to the real estate.
So, effectively, you are potentially putting what could be seen as a commercial development in a residential neighborhood?
Well, home-based daycares have always been a challenge. There was a board of adjustment capped the home-based daycares via an administrative review to six children back in the 80s.
Right.
State licensing requirements have kind of done this over the years regarding how many children are allowed in a home-based daycare versus a group home. All these different titles with a different number of children and employees associated with them. The UDC, as a matter of fact, I believe this was an amendment specifically proposed by the council to allow this category over five, but not a full-blown commercial daycare, with the conditional use permit and the specific site development standards.
Is there an expiration on the conditional use permit at all?
Once you enact it, you trigger it, you get the permits and come into compliance with these standards, it's there forever.
Okay.
It just, it seems like she operates a very, very well-received, you know, business in, in the neighborhood, the neighbors to come out and speak, seem very much in favor, but seems like she is so good, she, if she's looking farther down the road, she might want in the future start looking for something commercial because getting, getting that building, a residential house up to a commercial standard parking and all those things, there's going to be some work and some expense to that and it's just something she should be, should be fully aware of. She might want to get a business doing PR for other daycares. This is the first daycare we've ever gotten where the neighbors were for it.
We have a properly moved and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oppose.
Motion passes. Number eight, dual appointment of a subdivision and modification. It's been recommended for holdover, so we'll lump them together, is that okay? Move to approve? Oh, that was me. Entertain a motion? Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
So, holdover to March 21. Number nine, dual appointment or dual application subdivision and modification at 4464 and 4474 Halls Mill Road, Persons Development and Construction. Applicants are present in agreement with the 11 listed conditions of the subdivision and then the potential for findings of fact in the modification and the 21 listed conditions for the modification. Entertain a motion?
Take the subdivision?
Take them separately, sorry. Subdivision first.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded on the subdivision, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Modification, entertain a motion?
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations adopting findings of fact A through H.
Properly moved and seconded with findings of fact A through H. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 10, subdivision and modification at 1109, 1111, and 1113 West Side 65 Service Road North, the Harris subdivision. The applicant is present and in agreement with the seven listed conditions of the subdivision and the potential for findings of fact on the modification as well as the nine listed conditions. We'll take them separately. Subdivision, entertain a motion?
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the subdivision passes. Modification, entertain a motion?
Move. Second.
Properly moved and seconded with findings of fact A, B, C, and D. Entertain, or, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's the longest meeting we've had this year. So, number 11, dual application. 4600 Cypress Business Park Drive, applicant is present and in agreement with the 10 listed conditions for the subdivision and the potential of findings of fact for the rezone, which would be to Community Business Suburban District B3, as well as a few finding, or, excuse me, a few conditions there. We'll take them separately on the subdivision, entertain a motion?
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the subdivision passes. And on the rezone, again, this is a rezone from B3 and B5 to Community Business Suburban District B3 under UDC.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations adopting findings of fact A, C, D, E, and G.
Properly moved and seconded with findings of fact A, B, C, D, and G. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the rezone passes. That concludes the agenda items numbered. We will move now into old business for the consideration of the amendment to Article 13, Section 64-13-2 of the UDC to provide that the 10-acre minimum continuous land area required for planned developments shall not apply to the Village Center, Neighborhood Center, and Neighborhood General Subdistricts of the Spring Hill Overlay. Any comments from staff? And I do know we have representation in the audience.
Yes, sir. If you notice, we updated the staff report after the meeting last month. We took some of the comments from the commission, went and conducted some research, and we are proposing that the amendment read within any sub-district, the minimum contiguous land area required for planned developments shall be four acres. So, instead of there being no minimum, the minimum acreage would be four.
And that is based on questions and comments from commissioners last month that were concerned over the blanketing approach here?
That is correct.
Any questions, comments from the audience?
Hi, good afternoon. Kara Garsteki, oh, I'm really close. Kara Garsteki, 206 Carmel Drive East. I will be brief, I know we've been here a long time. I'm just here on behalf of the Village of Spring Hill Board. I'm a board member. I'm also a real estate attorney. My job on the board is to help us navigate legal issues. This includes the UDC, the Village of Spring Hill Overlay within the UDC, and I am just here to express our support for that. As you're aware and you see in the amendment attachment, there are four commercial areas identified in the Village of Spring Hill Overlay in the UDC and also in our master plan. That current 10-acre requirement is very burdensome for development and redevelopment within the Village of Spring Hill, as you know. In those four commercial areas, that's very difficult to find. So, we are in agreement of the proposal of the reduction from 10 to four contiguous acres. We feel it will provide flexibility for development redevelopment while still maintaining the overall control that we need. So, that's all for me, unless you have any questions.
Any questions from commissioners? Thank you, Ms. Garsteki. Entertain a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I believe we have others here to speak or...
Oh, thank you, thank you, Ms. Papas. Anyone else in the audience to speak for or against this agenda item?
Yes, my name is Dominic Brodus.
It's this skinnier microphone.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, my name is Dominic Brodus. I'm the owner of 412 McGregor Avenue. I'm a, I wanted to express some concerns and reservations against changing the UDC from 10 acres to four acres. I was looking at the site plan for that apartment complex and it seems like it's basically, it's too large for that area. I'm not sure, you've got over 600 parking spaces and two large garages at the, at the planned unit development there. And what I'm afraid is, has there been any traffic, a traffic concern because I'm not sure of the egress and egress of this area. If it comes out into McGregor, you really have a big back up there and you have traffic going, you're going to have traffic going through the neighborhoods on Mortica and Shipes Lane. So, I'm just afraid of the backup there. You've got, I think the development, I hadn't heard a lot, I tried to call the contractors and I couldn't get through. Nobody answered my question, so I'm not sure what they're developing, but it looks pretty big for that 4.1 acres. So, I'm against, I'm against changing the development, changing that to UDC from 10 acres to 4.1. I think it should remain the same or, and at least that development there should be reduced in size.
Thank you, Mr. Brodus. Anyone else to speak towards this proposed amendment? Please, Ms. Garsteki.
I just want to state, I'm not sure what he's specifically referring to, but this is with, our support is with respect to all future development and redevelopment. We're not here to address any specific development itself. This is just with respect to all commercial areas within the Village of Spring Hill Overlay in the UDC. So, that's all.
Any further comments or questions from commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, since I derailed this last month, I'll just say that I think that this, that this reduction is rational and thanks for, for entertaining my complaints.
And, any further com, Mr. Brodus? If you have a specific, towards a specific project, that's not on the agenda.
It's not, okay, it's not a, it's, it's the specific project, but the, what, what you talk about is in, is in also in Sandtown, and I'm referring to the old Amory. So, what, what they're doing is, if you're reducing it to 4.1 acres, you're basically approving a, a big apartment complex in that area, which is, it's just basically too dense for the area. So, I am, I'm talking about a specific one, but that 4.1 acres, I think should, I think it should remain at 10 acres.
All right, thank you, sir.
Jay, if I make, make a comment and...
Go ahead.
Margaret, I may need your help on this. And, Mr. Brodus, I think the, the, the objective of this is, you know, not to allow some variance for a hypothetical development or development to make come in the future, just simply to reduce the amount of acreage, you know, from 10 acres to four, such that, you know, a developer can be a little bit flexible, i-if you will, and kind of creating their own standards for development, whether it be aesthetics and other things, and Lenny, you can always help me out as well. So, I think, I think... Right, still got to be approved. So, any specific development that would come in here would have to be, you know, meet the UDC requirements, meet the Village of Spring Hill Overlay requirements, as well as any other municipal requirements, including traffic studies and, and things like that. So, just to, just wanted to clarify that. Is that kind of spot on?
So, I have a procedural question. Are we recommending approval to the council for the amendment? Is that what we're doing or is this a, okay. Well, I would move that we... Well, I would move that we, we recommend approval of the amendment for the four-acre minimum within the Village of Spring Hill to the city council.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes to recommend approval. New business item, review of the planning commission filing deadline and meeting schedule for May 2024. You have before you the next, basically, quarter of filing deadlines and meeting dates. In conversations with staff, the volume of applications is such that they feel a one-month meeting schedule is still appropriate, but given our decision at the end of last year, we told we would give them the option to make some changes quarterly. So, given that, we have before you a draft of the meeting deadline schedule, meeting deadline schedule for January through May of 2024. Entertain a motion for approval, or any comments from staff? Any, entertain a motion?
I would move to approve.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for the schedule passes. Any further comments? Meeting adjourned.